Outstanding, I kind of wish the whole team was here because they all really deserve a round of applause for how well we did at Sections. We came in second at Sections Suiedyna, who was the eventual state champion, and that's the highest we've finished in years. And it's especially gratifying because we don't have diving, so we always kind of start in the hole, and we were actually only supposed to finish fourth or fifth, so to come out second just as a testament to the girls and how they tapered and kind of came together at the end. And then I'm going to invite my four swimmers up that represent us at State, and there's two missing, so you guys can come up here. So I'm missing two seniors, I'm missing Claudia Stone and Sarah Anderson, but then I have Franny Bevel and Hattie Kugler, who are both juniors, Grace Loveland, who is a sophomore, and then Lexi Lee, who is a senior, and they represented us at State this year. Hattie finished seventh in the 100 breast stroke, and she actually finished first at Sections. She also broke our team record, which was held by Katherine Olstrom, who was an actual state champion in the 100 breast this year. Lexi broke our 100 fly record at Sections, breaking a record from actually a while ago, and she also competed in the 200 IM at State. Franny and Grace were on our 200 medley relay, and our, we also had a 400 free relay, Franny and Hattie, sorry, were on the medley, and Grace and Lexi were on the 400. The medley finished in the top 16. Sarah Anderson, who is not here, competed in the 200 free, she was top 16, and Claudia, who is not here, was also both on our medley and our 400 free relay, and both of those relays also broke our team records this year. So it was a phenomenal year, ended on a high note, and I'm looking forward to next year. Nice job, girls.
Oh, I didn't know that, sorry.
Don't, come back.
Sorry, I didn't know that. Didn't know that.
No Claudia.
Yeah.
No Sarah.
Yeah.
So Lexi, you ought to, come on up, shake everybody's hand. Congrats.
Thank you.
Grace?
Congratulations.
Patty? Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Franny?
Okay.
Congratulations. Picture? Where do you want us, Sarah? Okay.
Go ahead. Picture time. Not a minute.
Oh, for sure.
Everybody can slide this way towards Mr. O'Side, and maybe one step forward. Okay. Good? Thank you, everybody.
Now I'll ask Chris Nordstrom, our cross-country coach, to come up and talk as well.
First, thanks for having us. It's important, I think, for our student athletes to get recognized, especially those that go onto the State meet, as I know in a lot of our sports, we run into some very, very tough competition, so it's cool to get recognized, so I appreciate that. I'll just talk about our season. I coached both guys and girls, and we had another fantastic season. The girls had some, definitely some highlights. We run at a big meet, Roy Griaq Invitational, and he actually was a head coach here at St. Louis Park when he started his coaching journey many years ago, coached many state champions, both individuals and teams, and went on to, he's, you know, one of the most well-known college coaches in the NCAA history. And we ran in the maroon race, there was 41 teams, and our girls placed first out of 41 teams, and that was a big special day. And Josie, who I'll call up here in a second, she actually finished first out of, I think it was 340 runners. So again, that was a really special day and kind of a midseason highlight for us, very difficult thing to do, and they did awesome. And then our big goal is our conference meet, and our girls won our conference meet by one point, and it was our first conference title since 1987. So again, another exciting thing for our girls. And then we went on to Sections, and we're in Section 6AA. It is known as maybe the most difficult section in the Midwest, if not the country. Wazetta just finished third in the country at the national meet, and Edina finished 17th. And that's who we have to compete against and go to State against, so when we were able to get somebody to go, it's pretty special. And Josie finished sixth at our Section meet and ran a school record time of 1815, absolutely shattered her personal best on a pretty tough course, and qualified for State, and ran State down at St. Olaf about a week and a half later, and the goal was to be top 25, that was all State, and she finished 20th as a freshman, so we hope that she can continue to do well. So let's give a round of applause for Josie Maggi. Yes, and Tony and Ken, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Here you go, Josie. Congratulations.
Thank you. Everybody can get a little bit closer together, please. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. And then our next spotlight is featuring our middle school English teacher and theater director, Lil Zumberg.
Hi, I'm Lil Zumberg, I run the theater program at the middle school along with Jen Schmerler and Jessica Edelhite. And so we are just in the beginning of Tech Week for our fall production of The Mouse That Roared, and we're going to perform a short scene for you. I don't know if you're familiar with this story, it's a anti-Cold War political comedy from the 50s. So we have a full double cast, so there's actually 93 students from the middle school involved in this production, either in cast and crew. And I have with me today Casey Hunter, and she is one of our two student directors. Ada Terman is another one of our student directors, so we have a program where after kids get done performing with us as middle schoolers, they come back and they can apply to be student directors, and then they help with the production. So the scene you're going to see is one that Casey particularly worked on, and then we have our four performers. And I'm not going to give you like a huge backdrop of this story, because hopefully you'll come see it. You can come see it twice, because there's two separate casts, so you could get a different experience every other night. But this is a scene not too far into the show where they're deciding this very small country is going to invade the United States, because they are under this belief that if they invade the United States, or if they go to war with the United States and the United States beats them, that then the United States will give them money. So they're trying, and they're very poor, so they're trying to invade the United States, hoping to lose, and poor Tully, who you'll see in the hat, they're the, kind of the sucker that gets roped into being the leader of the army and set up to lose because they're hoping that in the end they'll get the money. So, I'm going to get the kids set up to perform, it's just about a four-minute clip. I'm going to move this out here. All right, guys, so you're going to think about this. Got it? Okay, we're showing eyes, so, and this coming down here, and your audience is right there. Okay? Okay?
Air raid, air raid, take cover, air raid! It's the Americans, air raid, air attack, they've come, they're here!
Please, Your Highness, take some cellar.
No!
If you want to yourself, think of us.
Think of me!
You!
If you stay up here, how can I go down there, when I might get killed up here?
Help, Mom Joyce, stop that! What? Highness, the United States Strategic Air Command.
I wish it were, then we knew they were aware of us.
But they might start dropping.
All they could drop is tourists, it's the Pan-American, the flight between Paris and Rome.
They couldn't possibly, well, possible.
Of course, right on time, too.
I thought once we declared war, they'd do something. Now we could just surrender, let this waiting, drives me crazy.
You're driving everyone crazy.
Perhaps we have a quick reason to the occasion. If they won't pay the slightest attention to us, what can we do?
Escalate.
Escalate.
Serves them right, too.
That's our decision, we're going to invade.
Invade the United States itself.
Hold on, a thing like that would make them very annoying.
Even a microscopic invasion would be such a shock, they'd assemble overwhelming amount of power against us, and then they'd start feeling embarrassed, they might be even more generous than usual.
But suppose we really make them mad?
And suppose the leader of this, this demonstration gives the plan away? Once he's captured, they'll get the truth out of him.
That's why the leader has to be someone so simple-minded, so, so unsophisticated, he truly believes that he's acting against the United States.
No one could be that simple. I wouldn't find anybody who'd accept.
Tully Bascom, can you report new progress?
Um, I've assembled the volunteers, and I have a plan of sorts, but, but Glory...
I have a point to tell you, Bascom, High Constable of Expeditionary Forces.
The obvious choice, Your Highness.
Glory, you do know that the United States spends billions every year on ballistic missiles and atomic submarines and jet fighters.
I did not say I thought it would be easy, but if you'd rather return to someone else...
No, 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 I'll do it, you can count on me. If that's what you want, that's what I'll do. I'll bring the war home to the enemy. There's just one point to be settled.
What point?
How do we get there?
Select the tourist line, our belonging to a neutral nation.
Third class, after all their soldiers.
Then what do we do on arrival?
Go through customs and present ourselves to the immigration department? We'll charter a small boat, something that can be found out of Marseille.
A Marseille boat works perfectly with my plan.
Teleto will prevail.
The situation suggests a commando operation with light automatic weapons. We'll infiltrate Washington D.C. either at night or in disguise. Their capital is full of dignitaries. We'll use the highest we can as hostages and retire to the boat and demand an investigation on our grievance.
Don't like that plan.
It's a wonderful plan, it just needs a few changes.
Can we discuss this privately?
That's unnecessary. First, instead of Washington's all those dignitaries, a more worthy object is their biggest city, New York.
New York?
And no disguises, we're not thieves. The boat should display the colors of Grand Center, as should the men.
But that doesn't really leave much chance for surprise.
You question your sovereign?
And another thing, we can't afford automatic war rifles, we'll have to depend instead on our traditional weapons.
The English longboat?
It was good enough for your ancestors.
Did you have too much for you?
I just want to be clear, we are to show the colors of Grand Fenwick and march ashore in broad daylight and attack New York City with bows and arrows.
That's what I'm telling you.
All right, Your Highness, you can count on me.
If I had reservations concerning the plan, you'd completely remove them.
Quite a strategist.
So we do have some spotlight certificates for you, and we appreciate very much that you performed for us.
And we need to know the time and the place of the performances.
So, thank you, Lil.
And we need to get the assistant director on camera.
Oh yes, Casey, will you come stand with me?
Love you, dear dear.
This is Casey.
Hi.
This is her second year as an assistant director, student director, so. Okay, the performances are this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday here at the high school in the auditorium at 7:00, and on Sunday at 1:00.
All right, Amelia? Thank you so much. John? There you go. Thank you so much. John?
Thank you very much.
Miles? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Rose? Thank you so much. And my sister, everybody, thank you so much, Lil.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, having us. We're going to try to get a big picture.
Great, okay.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Now we'll have our call to order, we'll approve the agenda. The agenda includes open forum, the superintendent's report, our discussion items include the audit report, the final levy certification, the international field trip request, the PSI enrollment update, the review of the 2019-20 and 20 to 2021 school calendar options, the combined World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration Plan report, policy development first reading, 503 student attendance, 503.1 early kindergarten admission, and 503.2 school attendance areas. We'll have our consent agenda. Our action agenda includes acceptance of gifts to the district, the open enrollment affirmation, our senior manor name change, approval of the 2018 audit, the final levy certification, the international field trip request, the employment contract approval for our new director of business services, communications and transmittals, and then adjournment. Is there a motion to approve this agenda? Moved by Ann Casey, is there a second? Second by Ken Morrison, all those in favor say aye.
There's, there's an addendum.
There is an addendum, thank you so much. The addendum includes the resolution of the designated election polling places, and the consent agenda includes the resolution of the designated election polling places, sorry about that, everybody.
So I'm going to approve the agenda with the addendum.
Thank you, Ann, is there a second? Second by Ken Morrison, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries 7-0, we have an agenda. Is there anyone here for open forum? Okay, seeing none, we'll go right into our superintendent's report.
Chair Waters, members of the board, this evening for my superintendent report, I would like to share some information connected to our strategic priorities, but before I do that, I would just like to take a second to acknowledge the students that were recognized this evening. It is always great to see students being recognized for the wonderful things that they're doing to contribute to our community, and it reminds me of the part of our mission where we talk about providing students multiple pathways to excellence, and as you saw there, we had students that excelled in the sports and also in the arts. So thank you to our students who took time tonight to be here and share their gifts and talents with us. The first item that I would like to share connected to my superintendent's report is that this past Friday, all licensed secondary staff spent the day engaged in interactive sessions intended to deepen our work, connected to strategy one of our strategic plan. Specifically, our teachers spent the day going deeper into culturally relevant pedagogy and racially conscious practices in our classrooms in collaboration time. As a part of this process, we continue to elevate student voice in our practice, and with that being the case, we invited several students to participate in our professional learning with our staff. Based on the feedback that we've received from staff thus far, staff found the experience to be positive as they were able to engage, and the learning that occurred was supportive of their needs and our strategic direction. Tomorrow evening, as many of you are aware, the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will be returning to St. Louis Park. I believe that this particular event is connected to strategy three of our strategic plan, community collaboration, as St. Louis Park Public Schools has partnered with STEP and other local community agencies to make sure that this is a wonderful event for all of our community for the past four years. The train will stop near the intersection of West Lake Street and Library Lane. The festivities will start at 5:00 PM with the holiday train's estimated arrival at 6:00 PM, and the concert is scheduled to go, take place from 6:15 to 6:45. The event is free to the public, and all attendees are asked to bring a food or a financial donation to support the local food shelf, STEP. The last item that I would like to share is connected to the opportunity that I had with several of our teaching and learning team members and Ann Casey last week, or last week at the AMSD Annual Conference. We had an opportunity to present at the conference, which was titled Ensuring Equity, Access, and Opportunity for All Students. Each member from our team had an opportunity to engage other participants at the conference and talk about the great work that we're doing here in St. Louis Park, and I just want to take a second to publicly thank those team members. As I referenced, Director Casey was present and participated in the facilitation of learning for other metro area school districts. Nellie Corman, a Spanish teacher here in St. Louis Park, and also a Bloomington Public Schools Board member, was present. Tammy Reynolds, Director of Student Services, was present. Frida Bailey, Principal on Special Assignment. Patrick Duffy, Director of Curriculum Instruction, and Prachi Mukherjee, our Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation. Thank you all for your contribution to enhancing the learning of other metro area school district leaders last, last week, or maybe it was the week before, now everything is blurring together, so I think it was the week before, actually. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Very good, thank you so much, and thank you for being so active with AMSD, it's an important place where we receive support, and moving on, the audit report with Ryan Engelstett from Baker Tilly, thank you so much for being here tonight.
Good evening, thank you, it's great to be with you this evening as well. To present the results of the work that we've done here for the most recent fiscal year that's been concluded, ending June 30th, 2018. And for purposes of going through the information, I basically condense 100-plus pages of documentation that we provide as part of our end, end deliverables that are tied to the engagements, and really hit the highlights within about 10 minutes here. So starting off, you know, I would first like to, you know, certainly thank the district and everybody involved in the audit process here. We, again this year, very pleased with, with how things went and the, and the level of cooperation that we received from everybody involved, so thank you. With the deliverables that we have, the first being, the primary one is the audited financial statements for the school district, and within the audited financial statements, towards the beginning is our independent auditor's report, and the wording that's included in that three-page portion of the overall report has all very standard wording included, touches on both the district's responsibilities for the accuracy of the financial information, as well as our responsibilities on the audit side for assessing the accuracy and reasonableness of the information. The, kind of the most important piece of that auditor's report is the opinion paragraph that's included within there. The type of opinion that we are including within the report again this year is considered a, is categorized as an unmodified opinion, also oftentimes referred to as a clean opinion, so that is the most, or that is the optimal result to achieve as part of a financial statement audit, so that's great news, of course. The financial statements themselves, governmental entities are unique in that there's basically two different sets of financial statements within the one comprehensive report. You've got the full accrual statements, which consolidate all the activities of the district together, and also pick up long-term assets and long-term liabilities, and like most school, like most school districts, and for that matter, most governmental entities, because of some of the accounting standards that have came into play here in recent years, particularly in regards to the need to pick up the state why, for participating employers in a statewide pension plan, if that, if those pension plans are underfunded, each participating employer picks up their prorata share of that underfunded amount. So one of the most significant liabilities coming through on this full accrual balance sheet in the long-term liability section is, is St. Louis Park's prorata share of that underfunded status of both the TRA plan as well as the para plan. So that is, and when you get down to the net position section, you'll see, again, like most all school districts, there ends up being an overall negative number that's presented for net position, and that's because of these long-term liabilities tied to these retirement-type obligations. Of course, that's not something that has to be funded currently, and it is very subjective, it is updated on an annual basis by actuaries, and the assumptions change from time to time, too. So those numbers can really jump around, and of course, it's also tied to how the investment market is doing, driving the value of those investments in the, in the plan trust. The, the fund statements, so this is really how the district manages the business, focuses in on, of course, the general fund, and then some of the other operating funds and debt service fund, et cetera. The results for the general fund for fiscal 18 turned out quite well on a budget of about $65 million at the, at the start. I think when the initial budget was adopted, it was projected to have a deficit of about $2 million, so there's a planned use of fund balance of about $2 million, maybe slightly north of there. That budget was amended, bringing it down to a planned use of fund balance of 1.5. As things turned out, it was only about $500,000 of fund balance that was, that was utilized to cover the deficit of expenditures over revenues for the fiscal year. So kudos goes out to, to all involved at the school district for that, for that sound fiscal management. With the fund balance, too, something that I have talked with management about is, the district does have a, have a target policy for amount of working capital to have in place at the end of the fiscal year, and part of my communications there, and currently St. Louis Parks is set at 6%, we are seeing many districts bump that up. It still ranges, I'd say anywhere from, say, 5% to 15%, but what I've communicated is, in a lot of cases, we're seeing that now at about 12% as far as a target. Currently, St. Louis Park is, for the general fund, unassigned fund balance currently is sitting at about 14%, so certainly a good position to be in, and ties back to what was talked about in the, in the tax levy discussion, about the ability to keep that increase in the taxes, you know, going forward to this next year, at a very modest level, so again, kudos there. The, one of the big items that came through in the financial statements, of course, this year was tied to the, the bond issuance that was approved by the taxpayers. So they're within the building construction or capital projects fund, there was the inflow of about $100 million of bond proceeds. Now, at the end, at the end of June, not much of that had been spent yet, I think it was, it was still about, say, $96 million or so that was held in escrow, that's going to be spent over the next several years. So that was a large item coming through, and then also, a good balance of the report is the, the standard footnote disclosures that are required, those are all quite consistent this year, but it does make up a significant portion of the report. So that's the information on the financial statements themselves. The, another deliverable that we provide as part of the audit is a required communications letter. Within that letter, there's different components, one piece, the, the front part of the letter requires us to report on any internal control related matters related to the finances or financial reporting of the district, and as is common with almost all audits we perform, particularly of, of school districts of similar size, and of course, those smaller than St. Louis Park, it's very common practice to have us as the external auditors be involved in preparing that comprehensive set of financial statements, as well as it being typical that as part of our procedures, we usually do identify the need to make some adjustments to general ledger amounts, there weren't many of those, but, but we did have to include a finding this... year was tied to the bond issuance that was approved by the taxpayers. So, they're within the Building Construction or Capital Projects Fund. There was the inflow of about $100 million of bond proceeds. Now, at the end, at the end of June, not much of that had been spent yet. I think it was, it was still about, say, $96 million or so that was held in escrow. That's going to be spent over the next several years. So, that was a large item coming through. And then also, a good balance of the report is the standard footnote disclosures that are required. Those are all quite consistent this year, but it does make up a significant portion of the report. So, that's the information on the financial statements themselves. The, another deliverable that we provide as part of the audit is a required communications letter. Within that letter, there's different components. One piece, the front part of the letter requires us to report on any internal control-related matters related to the finance, finances or financial reporting of the district. And as is common with almost all audits we perform, particularly of school districts of similar size and, of course, those smaller than St. Louis Park, it's very common practice to have us as the external auditors be involved in preparing that comprehensive set of financial statements, as well as it being typical that as part of our procedures, we usually do identify the need to make some adjustments to general ledger amounts. There weren't many of those, but, but we did have to include a finding this year, again, similar to what we've done in past years, in regards to those two pieces, the preparation of the financial statements and then the identifying, identification of adjusting entries. But all in all, you know, I'd say, you know, the district did a real nice job, especially given there was some transition happening at the business director level at the end of the fiscal year. You know, certainly a job well done in terms of getting, getting the year closed out. So. And then, we also issue reports, actually, sorry, also within that required communications letter, there's some informational points. And then there's also a section that has various standard communications that we have to provide as part of every audit engagement. And some of the items included in there, certainly very favorable, favorable in nature in terms of the fact that we did not have any disagreements, that we encountered as part of the disagreements with management, that we encountered as part of the engagement process, nor did we have anything surface that I would consider of any, you know, significant difficulties or really difficulties at all. So, again, thank you for, for that cooperation. Brings me to a couple other deliverables that we have, one being a report on the federal award programs. So, the state, so the school district does get fairly substantial, around $3 million of funding that comes from the state, but at its origin is federal dollars related to things like child nutrition, so the food service area, also special education, Title I, et cetera. This year, based on our risk assessment process and identifying which programs to test, it was the child nutrition cluster as well as the Title I funding area. And we did, for the testing of the Title I area, everything checked out fine. There were no, no findings that we're including in our report. That's a great job for those involved in that area. On the child nutrition side of things, we did have a couple findings this year, but it is worth noting that we had, we had three findings in that area last year. It's been decreased down to two and actually, within those findings as well, the extent of the exceptions that kind of roll up into those findings was substantially less than what we, we encountered for as part of our fiscal '17 audit. So, certainly, things moving in the right direction. And I know even after year-end here, into the fiscal year you're currently in, some additional checks and balances have been put into place. So, certainly would expect, you know, things to be pretty clean in that area going forward next year. So, then the last report that we issue relates to the student activity funds. There's various testing that we have to do with regards to both disbursements that are made out, out of those funds, as well as the, the collection of funds coming in and getting those dollars deposited into the appropriate bank accounts. The results of that testing, again, the, the findings we have included in our report are similar to the previous year, but again, improvement being made in terms of the, the exceptions noted. One being related to junior high, there's a requirement to have, or guidance that there should be two signatures on checks. That got implemented partway through the year. And then also, with deposits on the student activity funds, just making sure there's appropriate procedures in place to get those cash receipts when they're coming in, deposit into the bank within one week as the general guidance that's out there. So, we had some instances within our sample where it was beyond that period of time. But again, all in all, I'd say, you know, certainly a good audit for the district and certainly be proud of, proud of the result. And, and we appreciate the opportunity to be of service to St. Louis Park schools. So, with that, glad to field any questions anybody might have.
Yeah, Ryan, thanks. You know, we had the chance to meet with you for about an hour before this meeting and go over this in more detail.
Yep.
So, I just wanted to mention from that meeting, pretty much two things. One, your discussion about the financial statements and your coming in and doing the final prep is something that happens in other districts as well. The district's using the auditor to do that final work rather than keeping somebody on board on the payroll all year to do that work.
Right. Correct.
And then, on terms of this, the underfunded TRA, PRA, yeah, yeah, which looks, which on its face looks sort of bad on the, on the financial statements, but what it really is, is an accounting, it's as if you had to pay your mortgage all off this year and you have to put that all on your financial statement when in fact, you pay your mortgage off, you know, over multiple years.
That's the perfect analogy.
And that's why it looks worse than it really is?
Yep. Exactly. Yep.
I just have to go, because I always do this and they'll miss me if I don't. I just want to repeat that you told us that this is a clean opinion and an unmodified opinion, which means it's the highest opinion you can give.
Yes.
Thank you.
Indeed. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We really appreciate your time and diligence and it's a pleasure to work with you, Ryan. Have a, have a nice evening. Thanks again.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the final levy certification. This will be presented by our Director of Business Services, Patricia Magnuson.
Good evening. Again, Chair Waters, Superintendent O'Sai, Board Members. Tonight, I would recommend that the board approve the levy as presented. We had a tax hearing earlier this evening. There's a two-page document in your materials. The total levy is going up by 2% and you can see the line item details within those two pages. If you have any specific questions, I won't go through any of the details unless there's something more specific that you'd like me to, to cover. The three funds that are, that are included are the general fund, the community service fund, and the debt service fund, very similar to what was presented in September for the preliminary levy. Nothing significant changed.
We, we heard this in the, in the previous hearing, but now we're in a different meeting. So, I just want to make sure we're saying this again. So, the bottom line is that the grand total for our levy increases to 2% grand total. And what we saw on the chart that you presented in the previous hearings that for, for maybe an average homeowner with an average, I'm getting feedback, I don't know why, increase in their, in their property value over the last couple of years, that this might reflect a decrease in their actual property taxes for the school district portion.
Yes. Exactly. Yes. A median-valued home is about somewhere in the range of $260,000 in St. Louis Park. And that median-valued property owner will likely see a decrease in taxes for the school district portion if their property value increased by around 6%.
Patricia, thank you very much. You did a really great job walking us through it during the earlier hearing and we will be taking action very soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our teacher, Jeff Cohen, to talk about the international field trip request. And this is part of our board policy to hear from our teacher who is sponsoring international travel. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me. Again, I'm Jeff Cohen. I teach here at the high school. And I am asking the board for permission to conduct my, my sixth trip now, over to Europe with, with a handful of students this year. Our, our destination will be Paris, Normandy, and London. I picked, I picked the, and we've got the map up here now. I picked the location this year in large part to visit, to be able to visit Normandy. It will be, when we go in the spring, will be the 75th anniversary of the D-Day invasion. And, you know, we talk a lot about both countries in the course that I teach, AP European History. And the reason I do these tours, year in, year out, is to bring to life for these students what they learn about in the classroom. And it's just, it's kind of been an annual experience. It gets better every year. We've had great trips in the past. I anticipate we'll have a great trip this spring. Right now, I anticipate having 12 students. I usually, I'm very brief here to allow for some questions. I'll just open it up right away.
There was a very comprehensive board packet, which you always provide. And so, we, you know, have the routine questions about insurance, safety, security, and that is covered. But if you would just mention on camera, how we attend to that?
Of course. The, the insurance, EF Tours is the company that, that I go overseas with. They provide liability insurance for both myself as the teacher and as well as the school and the school district. Safety, there are many companies that put on this type of educational tour. I have investigated at length the different companies. I've debated going and trying other companies, but I continue to go back with EF in part because their, their record. They have a worldwide presence. They have field offices in every country that I would ever visit. I have a tour director, bilingual tour director, that's with me and the students 24/7. If we take a bus somewhere, if we go eat somewhere, all of the hotels that we stay in, we have a tour director who's very familiar with the lay of the land and, you know, that this is what they do. So, the, the parents and myself feel very comfortable knowing that we have somebody who's, you know, so adept at handle, you know, handling emergencies or anything else that would come up. Liability, safety, what was the other? Is there a third?
One that does come up, and we, we haven't ever really solved this one, it's the fundraising piece because it is quite an expensive trip.
It is an expensive trip. This year, I know there's a couple students that have raised some money with a GoFundMe type page. I've stayed away from the school-wide fundraising, just out of a professional courtesy to the other groups, the band, the orchestra, some of the language groups. It's competitive enough with the fundraising. I bring a very small group, you know, comparatively speaking, to the other, the other groups. EF does offer some fundraising from their organization. Again, there's the social media, the GoFundMe, but it is, it's certainly an expensive trip. Some students have had success with fundraising, others have not. But there, there is no real formal, organized fundraising that we do here at the school.
Is this opportunity, I'm getting feedback too. Is this opportunity limited to your AP students?
No, it isn't. It's open to any and all students that are interested. Some years, I have only my students. Usually, I have students that I've either had in the past or that I've never known up until the time of the trip. So, yeah, it's open to whoever would like to.
And are you maxed out at 12?
No, I'm not maxed out. 25 is the max. I, I have never even approached that here at the school for, Chairwoman Waters had mentioned it's an expensive trip, so.
So, then, all that wanted to go could go as long as they can come up with the funding?
Yes.
Of course, I have one question that I always ask, and how diverse is the group that's attending?
This, this year, I have one, I have a student of color who just recently signed up, a young lady in my class. She, in past years, I've had two, three, four. This year, I have just, I have one, one student of color. More, more young ladies this year than, than boys. But it's, it's usually a little bit better mix.
Did you do that somewhere?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yep.
So, now, now that all of that necessary stuff's out of the way, I'm just really excited for you and your students on this trip. I was, I asked Aston to get the, the map up for us because I was there in 2017 on a trip that's very similar to what you're doing. And it was, and, and so, as part of my lifelong learning, which is one of our missions, I read the book D-Day and I read a couple other things. And either before or after, I saw a couple movies and read some early thing on Churchill. And, and so, it's really fun. Normandy is right down, and if you're looking at the map, if the guy can get the screen up, yeah, if you look at the map by, by harbor down there, you know, you can see that Normandy is that long, are you there able to do that? Yeah. He's showing us where Normandy and all the beaches where the D-Day landings were. And the folks really came over from sort of Portsmouth, right in that area. That's where they came across.
Yep.
Thank you. And the Germans thought they were going to come over during the narrowest, at the narrowest area, which is over near Dover. And so, we sort of surprised them a bit, although they were really ready for us, as we know, in the early arrivals, because the casualties were high. And just, so your group is going to take a ferry from, is it Calais?
Calais, yep.
Calais.
Yep.
The one thing I know about France is you don't pronounce the last letter.
Yours, usually, usually.
Over to Dover.
Correct.
And if you're looking at home, you can see Dunkirk is just north of Calais. And that's where the, earlier in the war, and you probably know exactly how much earlier because you teach this, but earlier in the war, the English army was trapped there and would have been slaughtered if private boats hadn't come across the strait and rescued them. And if they'd been slaughtered, there was, there's a view that that would have been the end of it and Hitler would have succeeded in taking over.
Yeah, that, that's actually right. Whoops. Yeah, and we, you know, that's what makes this so, really so exciting to see the, the students, you know, we talk about it, I show them movie clips and we, we read Primary Source Doc, and you do all that, and then you see them, you know, now they're on this ferry and they're going across and they're like, and they're just the wonderment. It's just, it's, it's incredible. And again, I, I think this year will be a special year because of this anniversary and I'm really looking forward to it.
Just one more thing, and you probably know this, but, but after we did that part-
You keep saying that. You're putting pressure on it.
After we did that part of the trip, we too went to London. We didn't do everything you're doing, but I will, because I had gotten so into the World War II history and fascinated by Churchill, who I really think saved us, the Churchill Museum was not talked up in any of the guidebooks I was looking at, but I went to it anyway. And I spent three hours there and I could have spent longer. It was the most-
Down in the bunker?
Yeah, down in the bunker. Fascinating. Got the whole war rooms and then the museum next to it. Is that on your itinerary or at least encouraged?
Oh, no, it is on the itinerary, absolutely. And I, I've been there myself as well. And it, yeah, it's incredible. I mean, they recreated it and you go and you hear the voices. It's, we will certainly be visiting that though.
Have fun.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? I, it's a long night for you all, I know.
Well, a long night for you two and a long day. Thank you for staying. We appreciate it and we'll take action later.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Jeff. The next item on our agenda is the PSI enrollment update with Principal Cory Mislowski and Linda Stanley.
Good evenings, Board Members and Superintendent O'Sai. My name is Linda Stanley and this is Cory Mislowski, Principal at Park Spanish Immersion. We're here to report on the results of Policy 545, Park Spanish Immersion Admission Policy at on enrollment at the school. As of February of 2018, there were 535 potential kindergarteners, 203 from Aquila, 172 from Peter Hobart, and 160 from Susan Lindgren. Lotteries were held in February for St. Louis Park residents and a separate lottery for open enrollment students. Admission of St. Louis Park students included 31 students who resided in the Aquila attendance area, 20 students resided in the Peter Hobart attendance area, and 29 students resided in the Susan Lindgren area. This shows a summary of the enrollment for the 1819 school year. 16 students from the designated seats in St. Louis Park. These are students that qualified based on federal free and reduced lunch subsidy. Forums were completed by families to determine eligibility. 32 siblings of St. Louis Park residents attending PSI that would be currently in kindergarten through fourth grade, one open enrollment student, 31 students from the lottery, and six students of staff members. So, in February, we took 86- So, in February, we took 86 students in kindergarten. We received 139 applications from St. Louis Park residents. And out of that, we had 59 students on the waitlist in February, and as of November, there are 22 students on that waitlist. We received 40 applications for open enrollment. One open enrollment student was accepted and five students of staff with 34 students on the waitlist in February and still remain there. This shows since 2002, 2003, the waitlist numbers at the time of the February lottery. We just had a couple of years, 1617, where it really dropped, and then 1718, it went up. There's no consistency to it, is what I have found over the years, so. But a lot of them eventually get in. And then this shows the waitlist for open enrollment students. It's been pretty consistent the last six or seven years. The numbers have dropped down some based on we do not take siblings of open enrollment students automatically, and there's more immersion programs that are out there. These are the outcomes as of September. So, the column to the right, we start out with 59 students that were on the waitlist. But as the time progresses, 45 of those students end up going to a school in St. Louis Park. 27 ended up at Park Spanish Immersion, seven to Aquila, seven to Peter Hobart, and four to Susan Lindgren. And then we have four kids attending non-public schools, three students open enrolled out of the district, either to a city district or a charter school, three moved, and four, we just don't know where they ended up. As we go through, the percentage of students attending the schools stays pretty close. Aquila is pretty steady, 15% of the potential kindergarteners attending Park Spanish Immersion. Susan Lindgren increased 7%, and Peter Hobart actually went down 9% for the potential kindergarteners that would eventually go there. This shows the socioeconomic status at the school. And all the data now is based on June of 2018 because it's final data that's been submitted to the state. So, it shows by grade the percent of students that are eligible for free or reduced lunch. And for the school, it was 16 and 1/2%. As we look at this slide, we started outcomes in 2000, before the 2004, 2005 school year. And we had meetings and we tried to go to different areas of St. Louis Park, and, well, it didn't work. So, for the 910 school year, we went to the, specifically to the designated families that qualify for free or reduced meals. And the numbers started to go up to, we had a high, and now it's dropped a little, but I think we're at a, probably an area where it'll stay for a while. And then this shows the, all four elementary schools, students eligible for the free or reduced meals. So, we have 45.9% at Aquila, 42.3 at Peter Hobart, 33.5 at Susan Lindgren, and 16.5 at Susan Lindgren. The district percentage is about 34.4% of families that qualify. And this shows special at the four elementary schools. And it just has stayed pretty consistent over the years. And then we look at students that receive limited English proficiency, the English as a second language, and how many students receive those services at each of the elementary This is looking at ethnicity percentages at the schools. So, we have the blue are students of color and the red are white, not of Hispanic background at each of the four schools. And now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Mislowski.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening, everyone. The initial, just a reminder that the initial PSI waitlist remains in effect until the end of 1st grade. And then Linda sends out a postcard, are mailing to everyone to see if they'd like to remain on the list. And at that point, the list is transferred over to the PSI office. When openings occur, we go to the next family on the list. I invite the student family in for a conversation. It's not a formal assessment, it's a conversation because we want to do what's in the best interest of the child. When possible, we have a grade level teacher meet, and we take a look at the four domains of the Spanish language being reading, writing, speaking, listening compared to grade level. And then give feedback to families, things to consider, things to think about, and also how we can best support the child if the parents were to choose to enroll. We also do a tour and answer questions. We currently have some openings in grades 2 through 5. I think there's maybe two in 2nd grade. And we, when families come, because every school has their own lingo, every school has their own way of doing things. So, we've found a couple of outreach things have been really beneficial to families per their feedback. One would be through our PTO, we have what's called a mentor program that families can sign up. It's an optional voluntary program, but families can sign up. And it's like a phone a friend, right? Or I'll meet you at an event, or just another way to welcome families to our school. And then our social worker, as well as our school counselor do social, their social hours, if you will, lunches where the students can invite a friend and/or two and then come up. And we do that periodically, just as they're acclimating to the new school. And we had our immersion information night on Thursday, November 15th at 6:30. We had about 100 people in attendance. We give monthly tours, and we're always glad to share the great things that are happening in St. Louis Park schools and at PSI. So, we encourage people to hop on a tour or call our office if those times don't work out. So, it's a privilege and an honor to work in St. Louis Park, and we're so proud of our 519 beautiful geniuses and look forward to next year's kindergarten class to join them. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you both for all of that information. My question is, of those three students from this past year, for example, who we knew went to other public schools or charter schools in other communities, do we know which ones of them may be going to other immersion programs or Spanish immersion in particular?
Well, we don't, we don't make parents tell us. Some will share. I don't know off the top of my head which ones they were, which school districts, if it was just going to Hopkins or if it was going to Hopkins. And it's not always to another Spanish immersion, some go to Hopkins for their Chinese immersion.
I think I was just kind of wondering if there was a way, when these openings came up in 2nd grade, 3rd grade, 4th grade, if we could reach out to those families and say, we have spots now if you're an immersion program and Spanish immersion program, I would like to see if this would be a good fit, there'd be an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
So, Linda, you had mentioned on the free and reduced lunches, you guys went out to the families and asked them to?
We did previously. Previously, when we were first starting to try and increase the percentage of students, we had meetings at, well, Elliott, that doesn't exist, and Aquila, Meadowbrook, at the high school, and invited families specifically based on their address to attend. And that was when Barbara Pulliam was here. We didn't have too many families come. She, at that time, said it was a good turnout, but it, we found that it wasn't changing And so, that's when they went and decided to actually base it on families that qualify for free or reduced lunch, when the policy changed.
So, you have data that identifies families that qualify for free and reduced lunch?
When we sent, when I sent out applications, there's, I guess it would be mock-down form. I take the current form that to qualify for federal free and reduced lunch, send it with the application, and then they fill it out. I send it to food services, and they make a determination if they would qualify or not.
Okay, so like one or two questions and then?
It's the actual form that they fill out. There's a federal form, and it talks about your income, how many people are in your family, are you getting Hennepin County assistance, those kinds of things. And then I take it to food services, and they do it as though they were going to school right now and make the determination if they qualify or not.
And then the other question, I know you don't have this data, but you can certainly find it and let me know. So, I noticed that Aquila has 31 kids this year going to, Aquila District had, or area had 31 kids going to PSI. I was wondering if you know those demographics or if you could get that data so we can see what that looks like.
So, you want the demographics of the students that go?
Yep. So, but now, this is lottery, right? They're not chosen. So, it's just for my information. Thank you.
This may be like Mary's question where it's kind of asking you to speculate, but you said that in February, there were 59 students on the waitlist, and then by November, there were 22.
Yes.
So, 37 students got in in between. What happened to the ones who left or who didn't get, take those spots?
Well, first off, we hold the 20, up to the 20 seats that qualify for free or reduced lunch. We hold that up until two weeks before school starts. So, when you get to two weeks before school starts, there are multiple families that have already made a decision. They're going to go to Aquila, Peter Hobart, Susan Lindgren, they're going to go to a non-public school. They've made those decisions, and they don't want to change. So, we go through the waitlist faster because parents have turned, have decided to go someplace else. Then you get families that do end up moving between the time they're accepted and school starts, and the policy states that you have to be living in St. Louis Park when school And so, then you're filling spaces at a time when families have already made a decision. So, we do go through that waitlist more, and they want to stay at the other elementary school that they're at, so.
Two sort of things, and I don't, I think the policy has the district doing the reaching out to other families, if I'm remembering it correctly, Cory. But I'm just wondering, we might want to take a look at how we're reaching out to families and making them aware of the opportunity for PSI. But am I right, fall 2019, you will be at what we now call Cedar Manor? Okay. I would be curious, Linda, as you're putting the data together for us for next year, to see comparisons on some of those charts that just showed us the current numbers. At that point, you know, PSI is going to be in a, up in a corner of our district, not centrally located. And I'm just going to be curious to see if some of the numbers show a difference. And then we'll have to wait three years for trend data, according to Parachi, to know what, whether we can draw any correlations to that. But I will be curious to see if we, if that makes a difference to location.
So, can I tag on to that? So, I was wondering if Cory, you're doing anything different because, for the lottery or Linda, because of the new location, or is it basically the same thing? Are you doing anything in terms of the outreach or the way you're approaching this?
Well, we'll, we'll send a letter to every student that we feel is a potential kindergartner. And in that, there's a cover letter that talks about the spaces, shows timelines, I send the form for free and reduced lunch, and then the application, we send the letter in Spanish and Somali. It's talked about, it's, we talked about it at the information night.
And then Sarah, not to put you on the spot, but we did a, the district did a postcard this year about all four sites that went out a couple of weeks before the immersion information night. And then there's another big brochure, which will go out to all who we believe are the potential kindergarten families. Those were the district-specific mailing.
And it talks about kindergarten at all the schools.
And then, in addition, Joe, I did kind of sort of make a joke that wasn't terribly funny, but I just said, you know, that the, that students wouldn't show up at Central, right? That we, so we did talk about, we had some of the big boards up so that people were at least aware that we were moving across town.
You can have some arrows or something.
Hey, maybe pick up a box and help. No, just kidding.
Chair Waters, if I could just have Sarah speak a little bit about some of the changes that have occurred this year around kindergarten information to the community, specifically, if you would be willing to talk about the new brochure that we'll be sharing here soon with the community.
Thank you, Superintendent Osei. So, as Cory mentioned, we, early, earlier this fall, we sent out a preliminary postcard to all potential incoming kindergarten families, inviting them to consider St. Louis Park public schools and all of the wonderful opportunities that were available to them, both in their neighborhood schools as well as Park Spanish Immersion. And so, that was our first, first marketing contact to say, it's time to start thinking about kindergarten. This is, I'm a, I'm a mom of a 1st grader myself, and so, this is always a very exciting time and a little bit alarming, I can say, on behalf of other mommies out there of, wow, it's time, I got to start thinking about this. And so, after the postcard, families should have received within the last week a really in-depth dive into our kindergarten offerings in St. Louis Park. And so, it's about a 12-plus page marketing brochure that details our programs, not only from Park Spanish Immersion and our Spanish immersion program, but also our International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program that's offered at the three neighborhood schools, and talking about our enrollment procedures, immunizations and what's required, kind of anything you would ever need to know in one place for kindergarten. And so, families should have received that. If they didn't, they can contact the district office and we'll send you one. But this is a really great resource, not only to introduce the concept of kindergarten and what it looks like in St. Louis Park, but also remind families that tours are available at all of the schools. So, Dr. Mislowski mentioned PSI, they're available at all of the schools. You can register online or you can call the school office. And what's fantastic is they're available during the school day, if that works for you. But principals are also willing to do this after school and at night to work with the convenience of families. And so, if available to you and the timing works, you can see the school during the school day, take a look at a classroom, visit the lunchroom, get some ideas of what it looks like, as well as, we'll have the typical regular events of registration night coming up in the spring and some other special events along the way. But we're really doing our best to reach out to all of our families and make sure they're excited about kindergarten.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the update. Next up is the review of the 2019, 2020, and the 2020, 2021 calendar options with Rick Pryor, our Director of Human Resources. Thanks so much, Rick. This is the one project where we know we will please none of the people all of the time.
All the time.
Chair members of the board, Superintendent Ossai, it's my distinct privilege, for the fifth time, to share the calendar with the board. Oh, and they gave me a Macintosh, too. Is somebody, you're driving? Oh, bless you. Okay. So just a reminder to the board and anyone else that's listening, the board has typically, over the last five school years, sought to have two years of calendars approved. So the board typically is approving next fall's calendar and then preliminarily looking out one year and approving the next calendar. So the calendar that's up on the board for 1920 with all the circles on it, has actually been approved by the board last January 12th of 2018. And so it's a perfectly workable calendar, but as we were looking at some items, we came back and revisited it. I don't know, can that be blown up at all or can you see that? Or I can work off of this, too. So the first thing, and I don't know how the best do that, but right here in the opening week, we look at, you know, for this year, for the first time, we split our opening week for new teachers. So this would be teachers whose first year is in St. Louis Park Public Schools. And we have three days with our new teachers and we put, we split them and on the first Monday of that week, before all teachers come back, we bring them back, we do the kind of formal orientation, introduce them to the school district, the superintendent, PAT, the teachers' union, we give them their technology, we go through their benefits, we load them full of information. We then sent them off as a cohort to Beyond Diversity, which for the last two years has gotten rave reviews. And then they come back for Thursday and Friday and have two days kind of in their classes with their principals and some of the staff to get themselves a little bit ready before the big opening week next week. And we'd like to recommend keeping that. We also visited this day here about kindergartners coming back two days after the regular, and for the most part, everybody believed that that was of instructional value, to get the teachers and the parents and the kindergartners extra home visits and contacts and get them ready and show them where their books would go or in their backpacks and things. So that was kept. We also looked at, this was the first year where we had professional development and conferences split up and we had secondary PD on this day in October, and this day in October, and we had PD for elementary people that first Friday in November. And then that was a grading and reporting day for the secondary people, secondary teachers. We also looked at whether or not we should be holding school on Election Day. And after looking at other districts and the sentiments of the parent advisory committee, teachers and others, we ultimately settled on still recommending holding school on Election Day instead of moving a bunch of items around and then not having school Monday and Tuesday that week. We also looked at the professional development day we had in December for all staff, recommend keeping that. We looked at options for this two-week winter break and whether or not we should possibly come back. Anytime that the New Year's holiday falls Wednesday, Tuesday, Monday, the question would, should we be, you know, returning on the second or third or close after that and having those as instructional days? Likewise, in the second year, if, you know, the Christmas holiday is way back here on Thursday or Friday, should we be going to school that Monday, Tuesday and optimizing some of that or keeping the 10-day break? So we looked at, you know, the conference model here for elementary. And then our early release days, these light blue days, and we're going to bring you a couple of options to change this calendar for next year that would delete the early release days. And there was a lot of thinking about whether or not those were good instructional days or they were good professional development days and whether parents valued the early release days or didn't value the early release days. And so we're going to bring you a couple of options that remove the early release days and put in another full professional development day. And we believe that even though we ultimately will reduce our instructional days by one, from 172 to 171, we believe that we'll be getting two better, actual better instructional days in October and in May, and we'll also be getting better professional development for our staff where we can do district-wide professional development in the morning, have a break and then come back and do site-specific professional development for more than that hour and a half that you kind of get jammed at the end of the early release day. So those are some considerations. If you could go to the second one, and I won't spend as much time since we kind of laid out all those options. This option, it's listed as Option 3 PD. You'll see some of the things that we did here was remove the PD day or move the early release day, kept some of the other things that we talked about. This calendar has us coming back to school and not having a full 10-day break. It keeps the day before Thanksgiving as a conference compensation day. It adds this full professional development day in March. And then we still get out in May. So basically, it's a better professional development model, no early release days, and then it breaks up the winter break and doesn't have a 10-day winter break. That's Option 3. Option 4 is similar to that in that it does everything with professional development, but it maintains a 10-day winter break. It loses, to keep the instructional days, it loses this day before Thanksgiving and the conference comp day is paid as the first day of winter break. So no one comes to work that day, but that's part of the teacher 185 duty day schedule. And I think that's the bulk of the changes there. That's, I think from the Option 3 also, this becomes an instructional day and the conference comp in the spring is pushed up into spring break. So that maintains the 185 teacher duty days and 171 instructional days at secondary. Thoughts on options from the board? We're going to, the board will see this again in January. We're continuing to get some feedback from the teachers' union. We have a calendar committee on this coming Thursday morning. And then we also have meet and confer coming back for discussion the third week in December.
Yeah, Rick, they may have all blurred a bit, so let me just ask you, am I correct that on every option, the last day of school stays the same? Even on those where you're cutting into the two-week winter break? It doesn't get people out of school any sooner?
Correct. It doesn't get, it doesn't move that end date. The last day for students will be June 5th.
Isn't that partly because of how certain holidays fall and just the construct of the calendar?
Yes. The last day will typically always be in June, but it might be in the first week or might slide into the second week. When we look at our next calendar, you'll actually see options that have us going as late as June, like 12th or 13th. And then there's an option that gets us out in the first week of June. So in this particular one, the day, the last day for students didn't change, just some of the things in the middle changed.
You're asking for feedback, so I'm going to give you feedback.
Thank you, Sarah.
Let's come back to school on the second. That's my feedback. That's a 12-day-long break, so that's what, Option 3? We hear a lot of feedback both ways on this. Teachers seem to be on one side, parents seem to be on the other, more or less. But I think we've had the longer break for a bunch of years in a row. So coming back on the second for this still gives you a 12-day-long break and seems like that makes sense to me.
Thank you for reminding me of something. There is one other thing in there that I forgot to mention. With Education Minnesota actually changing its conference schedule, so what is known as MEA in October, the four-day weekend, MEA has changed that to being a one-day event. And that one-day event will be the third Thursday of the month. So the question is, do we continue to have two days off for a one-day event? And one option in there would be to take those two green days, slide them into there. And, you know, either we have a four-day weekend here or we have a break here or those days could get us out earlier there. But I'm not sure that, you know, in this calendar, there isn't an urgency of getting us out that much earlier to be done in the middle. So this calendar has the, you know, the coming back right after New Year's Day. Comes back on, we come back on the second.
I'm just wondering about the MEA. Are they going to leave that to a one-day event or do you think after a couple of years or a year?
They have published a 10-year schedule that has it on the third Thursday of the month for the next 10 years.
Can you say a little bit more about the decision or your recommendation about Election Day?
Yeah.
Because I know we had received some parent feedback on that, so I just kind of wanted to get the parameters down for what the reasoning is behind that.
And Superintendent, you were also in part of this, if you wanted to go. But in looking at all of the things that would have to happen in that day and then the, you know, our work with the city on polling places to, if I can see this here. So if we're talking about here, we would have to slide this day, which is the grading and reporting and PD day, to the Monday. We believe that it would be very difficult to just not have school on Tuesday. One of the surrounding districts had school on Tuesday, or had school on Monday, didn't have school on Election Day, and then tried to have them bring back students for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and they said it did not go well. There were people who showed up when they shouldn't have showed up, didn't show up when they should have showed up, and it was, you know, it wasn't, Monday was kind of a lost day in that, in that whole transaction. So we believe that you'd take that PD day, grading and reporting day, put that there, and then have a conference comp day on Election Day, which means that you'd move that day before Thanksgiving up there and you wouldn't have school there. There was conversation about providing additional staff, securing the facilities, making sure that, we work with our city, so, you know, you don't have to have every single door open. If you're going to vote in the, let's just say, the cafeteria, you know, the closest door to the cafeteria could be cordoned off and we could have, you know, better access in and out, but we wouldn't make the entire school vulnerable and open to people. So we're going to be working with the city and also the superintendent said we would be providing additional staff members and/or volunteers to make sure that we were, making sure people were where they were supposed to be.
Thank you, Rick, for adding all of those pieces. And I would say, I'd also receive feedback from parents and community with questions about holding school on Election Day. And as we explored this option and as we sought input from community stakeholders, we also heard a lot of feedback about the desire to hold school on Election Day for a number of reasons. You know, one in which is childcare, you know, because if we weren't going to hold school for Election Day, what we would subsequently not do is hold kids' place. And so we heard from parents that that would be a hardship for them not to have a place for their children to go on Election Day. So what we're going to do instead, as Rick has described, is increase security. I'm going to work with the city to figure out how we can streamline entrances in order to ensure that our environments are safe and go from that standpoint and continue to learn and figure out how we keep our buildings safe on Election Day.
One other piece, and this is, I would say, without perfectly objective scientific data, it is also one of the only times that our community gets to be in our buildings when the students are there and engaged and the students are going through the student voting. So the kids are coming down to the polls and the adults see them and they see the adults. And assuming that we can do all the other things right, we think that right now, at this point, it would be our recommendation to have school on Election Day. At least next year now. At least next year.
Thank you.
You said both of the things I was about to say. The first part, I do find it very valuable to go with my kids and vote with them in their school and then right after they vote with me, they head into class. The other thing was what you just alluded to at the end, 19 is going to be a lot different than 20. And I know my experience is in Susan Lindgren. So in an off-year election, even though there's going to be a ground swell of interest to fill my seat in 19, there's not going to be that many people and they have it in the media center. And so you can do exactly what you said. You can have people get in and out of that area pretty quickly. But they need to use the gym when it's 2020 or 2018. So they're actually coming up through the school. So gives us some time to think about that. So I think you're right. So in 19, it's probably not going to be that big of an issue, but in 20, we need to, you know, have that kind of buttoned up.
So you alluded to, well, you directed the question about the MEA weekend or week. Are we thinking about removing those two days off and just having that one break in the middle?
You'll see an option in 2021 that doesn't have, that has us holding school on the All right. So if we go to, yeah, 2020 and 2021, there's some interesting and ugly things about this calendar. And for schools, the, you know, Labor Day is always the first Monday of the month and the first Monday of the month can fall between the first and the seventh of the month mathematically. And this one falls on the seventh, which is as late as it can be. So students wouldn't be coming back until the eighth. We looked at, since all of our buildings are air-conditioned, would this be a year to move the start of school before Labor Day? That, you know, it's always, you know, you don't want to do it before Labor Day. What if it's hot, 100 degrees? That's awful. With our buildings being air-conditioned, there is a possibility we could. However, we collide with a very intensive construction schedule and both Tom Bravo, who's running the construction projects, and Tom Marble, who is running all the IT that has to be put back in the buildings after all the construction's done, says we need every minute and they don't believe that we would have a successful opening to school if we tried to go the week before. So our recommendation would be to start after Labor Day. Again, maintain the kindergarten start. In this calendar, we do hold MEA. We still have taken out the early release days. There is this question about what do we do with election? We do not have, we have, we're holding school on election in this calendar recommendation. And that would be subject to also what can we work out with the city about making sure that we're holding the elections in places that we believe are the safest for students and staff and the people who are coming and voting. This calendar does, because the Christmas holiday is way back on Friday, we would not hold school those first three days, the first two days. The first two days would be, the first two days would be school days. The third day on Wednesday would be the conference comp day that normally is right before Thanksgiving. So we're holding school before Thanksgiving. We're holding school in that period of time. And then that's a day off. So there would be a long break, but not as long as it has been in the past sometimes. Everything else is pretty standard. We didn't change anything else. We retained that PD day. We still have a spring break after the end of the semester. But as you can see, we don't get out until the second week, last day for students, June 9th. So that is option three of the second year. You're not seeing option one and two because they were thrown out, you know, of even consideration. There were uglier things that were part of them that we went through. And so we've gotten to option three and option four. The primary feature of option four is while we still start after Labor Day, we can get out as early as June 4th. And if we get out on June 4th, to do that, we would have to go, come to school three days over the winter break. That Thursday would be the conference comp day that was over here. We would also not hold school, we would hold, we would hold school over the MEA days up in October. And with that, we would be able to get out on June 4th. Even after this option, I would say, if you look down in here, the first semester is 90 days, the second semester is 81 days. There could be a consideration of moving this up a week so that the end of the semester ends here. Then we would end up with 86 days in the first semester, 85 days in the second semester. Teachers tend to like balanced semesters for instructional purposes. That would be one possible recommendation in this calendar, just to balance out the semesters a little bit.
Would you have any guess when most schools would get out? I mean, is it easy to get an exemption to start before Labor Day? So most schools would start early and get out earlier than?
Yeah, the bar is pretty low. If you, you know, if you want to start before Labor Day, you petition the commissioner, you explain, you know, why you have construction needs. And usually, schools have some construction that's going on. And we haven't heard of any schools being turned down. There's a bit, you know, I think they all made plausible explanations of why they either needed, you know, the extra time at the end of the year or the beginning of the year.
Do you might guess that most schools would probably get out earlier than this?
I don't even want to hazard a guess, yeah. I don't think they would get out earlier than June 4th, you know, by much in doing this. This is a pretty efficient calendar. You know, for some people, you know, it's also, I would say, a hard calendar on teachers and maybe kids in that, you know, you don't have the little break here in October. You are having a shorter break here. And, you know, so, you know, things that people have become accustomed to aren't in this calendar. But at least you're not still there on June 9th and teachers on June 10th.
Yeah, just a couple of observations. I do have some, no, I don't have small children, so maybe this is why I have a slightly different view, Joe. But I do have some concern for teachers and families who travel for the holidays to get to other places to be with family who are not located here.
Right.
Both within the states and some of our, some of our teachers and families are international. So I'm concerned particularly as I look at the short days, the non-travel days essentially, heading into the Christmas holidays on these options. And I'm sure you'll get that feedback, but I'm just going to echo that feedback. If we have to start after Labor Day. If we can start before, maybe there's a way to accommodate everybody. But you'll get, and then my next question was really, what feedback process is in place for the next steps?
So we've currently gotten feedback from the parent advisory committee and ran all these, you know, all these options past them. We have met with the teachers. We have met with the parent professional group. We have met with the clerical union and, you know, and we will be meeting with the custodial union. So we've met with most of our employee groups, you know, who, especially those that work that 10-month calendar, you know, for those groups. And then now, we're continuing to get information from the teachers' groups about, you know, fine-tuning some of these options and, you know, which may be the best. And we're meeting with our principals about which, you know, if we believe our calendar is an instructional tool, which do we believe provides the best, you know, instructional opportunities for students?
So I remember I mentioned this to you, Rick, before, but I want to say it because it affects not this calendar, but that the summer of this calendar is that the Rosh Hashanah holiday falls
Right there.
the day after Labor Day
Yeah.
in 2021.
Correct.
So that would mean coming back to school and expecting kids to miss the first day of school or having that day off. And so again, that's just going to affect the length of that summer. So we would need to know before we finalize this calendar what we're thinking about for the end of that summer.
So now I see the MEA out.
Yes.
And I'm wondering, in your personal, your professional opinion, do you believe that on that Thursday, some of the teachers that belong to the union would want to go attend those events and will be short staff? Because I think that most of them would say, I want to go attend that, and I have the right to go do it.
If I asked them to bring back programs, I think I would have four, maybe 12. I, out of all the things that we do, if I had to cover with subs any day, I would take probably that day over some of the others. But I do, you know, it is a consideration. And people could just call our bluff and say, you know, I'd like to go to that. Now, that is not a contractual right. They don't have a, it's just a workshop like any other workshop that's put on by thousands of people. So they would have to take a personal day. They would have to, you know, they would have to use one of their days off to attend that.
I wanted to share with the rest of the board one of the other comments that was made during our recent DPAC meeting and discussion of this was the choppiness of the fall for the students with so many days off. And if you look at option four, that with losing MEA, that provides a little more continuity. And option three here for 2021, of the 15 weeks, and I did this quickly, so I may be off a little bit. But of the 15 weeks that our students are in school through the end of that year until the holiday break in December, there's only eight or nine full weeks of school. And then particularly if we have to do something on the 2020 election, on Election Day in 2020, that breaks it up additionally. And so I kind of, again, since you, there's feedback opportunities here, I kind of like losing MEA for the sake of continuity in the schedule and keeping kids in five days of school. I will say the caveat, though, is I was not a child in Minnesota. And so I do not have the tradition and the attachment to the holiday that other people might.
All right.
Really appreciate the diligence as you get the input. It is a long process. We do process on this very, very well. And as I said before you started, this is the one thing we do that no one is entirely happy with. There's just no possible way to please everybody. So as we move forward, I think we really need to consider deeply what you said about the fact that the calendar is an educational tool. That is our purpose, how it relates to our mission, how it relates to our strategic plan. So stuff that we've done for generations based out of tradition, that doesn't have to be a delimeter anymore. Because it's in our strategic plan that we're not going to always go with past practice just because we always did it. And I do see the need to evolve, especially as we move into our next topic, which is going to be presented by Superintendent Osai and Dr. Patrick Duffy on the World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration Plan. So how much time we spend in school has an impact on our results. Rick, thank you so much for your time.
Chair Waters, members of the board. This evening, I will be presenting the Combined World's Best Workforce Plan and Achievement and Integration Plan. In order to share this information with you this evening, I will be presenting with Patrick Duffy, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Prachi Mukherjee, our Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation. To start off, I think it's important to highlight some beliefs that we have around the World's Best Workforce Plan and Achievement and Integration Plan here in St. Louis Park. For starters, we believe that we have clear goals. We also believe that we have a plan to help us accomplish those goals specifically related to the strategies and deliverables of our strategic plan. At all of our sites, we have continuous improvement work to be done, and we do that through our site improvement plans. We also believe that there is evidence that we have that we're making a difference towards accomplishing these goals. This evening, Prachi will talk a little bit about the goals as it relates to World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration. And what you'll see there is in some areas, we're making faster progress than others. But what you won't see on the Achievement and Integration or World's Best Workforce Plan are some of the goals that we believe, what we would consider qualitative data, like our student engagement survey data, some of the results and feedback that we're getting from our staff. You know, the way I'll describe this is that I believe that our mission drives us to, well, I should back up and say that I firmly believe that public education is the key. It's essential to a successful democratic society. The World's Best Workforce and an Achievement and Integration Plan and its goals really are designed to help us create positive members that contribute to our workforce. Specifically, as it relates to World's Best Workforce, the idea was founded or was focused so that Minnesota would be more competitive, so that, you know, students would be college and career-ready, employees to lead the state's workforce. While I certainly believe we have a responsibility here in St. Louis Park to contribute to the workforce, I also believe that we have a responsibility to produce productive citizens that are contributing to the democracy of our country. And what you'll see in our strategic plan, our strategic plan in many ways does both, which excites me about being here in St. Louis Park. And this evening, we'll talk a little bit about the data that's connected to the World's Best Workforce Goals and Achievement and Integration Plan, but also some of the professional development we're doing here in St. Louis Park to influence that data over time. To highlight both of these plans, so I would want to, I want to say that I appreciate the Department of, Minnesota Department of Education for combining the plans. As you've had a chance to review the plan that we'll be submitting here later this week, you'll see that it's very robust, and it's already, I think, 20 or close to 20-something pages. So if you can imagine previously reporting individually on both of those plans, took quite a lot of time. So I'm thankful that the Minnesota Department of Education has found a way to try to streamline the process. But as I mentioned before, the World's Best Workforce Plan is really around five-goal areas. Kindergarten readiness, making sure that students are reading at grade level by third grade, ensuring that students are graduating from high school, that they're ready for college and career, and that we're working to close the achievement gap on all state-mandated measures. The Achievement and Integration Plan has some similarity around closing achievement gaps. That plan is designed to pursue racial and economic integration of our schools. And as you've heard earlier from Linda Stanley and Corey Maslowsky here in St. Louis Park, as it relates to the racial distribution of students across our schools, thanks to some very courageous action of members of this board and members that are no longer on this board, there were some policies passed to ensure that boundaries aligned and that we would have that balance. This goal, this is around increasing student achievement, creating equitable educational opportunities, and, as I mentioned before, reducing academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. So how do we measure the success? So there's really three areas that we look at. And each of the goals that Jill, that Prachi will talk to us about tonight, you know, either highlight proficiency, areas that we're trying to improve students' proficiency, or either areas that we're improving growth. You'll see that specifically as it relates to some of our kindergarten readiness data that Prachi will share. You'll see some of the goals that are connected to gap closing. So the one goal that is common between the World's Best Workforce Plan and our Achievement and Integration Plan is the gap-closing goal. And Prachi will talk a little bit about that. At this time, I'm going to have Prachi come and share the data.
Thank you, Superintendent Osai. So first off, we have for 2017-18 kindergarten percentages at low risk. So the test that we are using here is early reading assessment. And it gives students, based on their score, their median reading score, it gives them either a low-risk label, which means they're on track, or some risk or high risk. So basically, you're looking at students who are on track, disaggregated by the federal race categories, which is different. You're seeing that for the first time this year. Because before, we used to use state race categories where students had to pick only one racial category for their identity. And now they're able to pick more than one. So you see bi/ multiracial categories show up for the first time now. And as you can see, some of these student groups have very small number of students. For example, American Indian, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander have very small numbers of students. But it is important, we believe, to represent them in the data and not continue with their invisibility simply because of small numbers of students. And you'll see that for the most part, from fall, winter to spring, the percent of students who are on track increases. This one is around the goal of kindergarten readiness. And we look at fall data for the same test, early reading assessment, to see how are students entering our schools. The kindergarten data that you see here only includes students who are also here for fall, winter, as well as spring. So students who spent the whole year. And when you see 0%, it could be that either from that group, nobody was on track in the fall, or else there weren't any students in that group. And I think you have the full report. I think our goal is 2% increase every year. Do you know? If that's, you can probably refer to your table, your report, the full report. This one is third grade reading, MCA and MTAS. And again, this is going to look slightly different, not just because of the federal race categories, but also new rules went into effect. Accountability rules went into effect with 2018 data. For example, it's December 15th enrollment, as well as at least 50% of the school year, the child was in attendance. Now, this one does not, this is for the whole district. And students who opted out are not part of the denominator, so they're not impacting our proficiency percentages negatively. You have four years of data there. And our goal was around increasing that by 2%. This is four-year graduation rates, again, disaggregated by the different federal racial categories. And because there are so many years in here, you can't quite see what the percentages are. So I'll take you to the next page, which shows you the table, the percent of students graduating each year. And if a number looks lower than the previous year, it's quite possible that the five- or six-year graduation rates might explain what happened to that student population. And in 2017, the bi/ multiracial category, that's blank because there weren't enough students to report. The state provides us with this data. The state provides us with this data. And here's the number of graduates every year for each category, and you saw the percentages, so you'll get an idea of the total. This table shows us the percent of students who enroll in any institution of higher education within 16 months of getting a high school diploma. And you'll see that the numbers show our district-wide data compared against statewide data for the same federal racial category. And I think in every instance, our numbers are quite a bit better than the state averages. So, you know, we looked at all of this data and more at the data retreat that was held in August at the beginning of the school year, and schools brought leadership teams who spent time looking at their data and coming up with their student, with their school improvement plans, so that they could figure out what they were going to do in order to get better results, or the goal that they were setting for themselves. And in the same way, the district looks at our data and says, what do we have to do in terms of professional development to equip our teachers and our staff to be able to meet the goals and the strategic mission that we have set for ourselves? So, Dr. Duffy is here to tell you about professional development that has happened so far this school year.
Prachi, is that the percentage of graduates that are enrolled in higher education within 16 months?
Did anyone else have questions?
We've been through this question a lot, but just remind me, these are self-identified categories or parent-identified categories?
Either whoever is filling out the form when the child is being enrolled in school. And you can change that on parent request.
Thank you.
You mentioned third grade, that those who opt out don't affect the score, but, I mean, it could affect your random sample if it was big enough. So, I'm just curious, are, is there a lot of opting out that young? I know there's like in high school, but does it start way back to grade?
No, you're right. No, in third grade, we don't have opt-outs. And if there are, like, one or two, then it's usually for a medical reason, and then the parent, if they submit a letter, then a medical exemption doesn't count as an opt-out.
Good evening, Chair Waters, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk a little bit about our professional development that we've been engaging in throughout the year. You know, we started the year recognizing that we have very little time relatively to really engage our staff in district-wide professional development. And we wanted to ensure that every moment we had with them was as precious to them as it was to us, and we wanted it to be very meaningful. And we really wanted to also engage from a belief that great organizations start with really understanding our why and our purpose, and also recognizing that staff members often don't get, they get stressed out about what's on their plate, not necessarily about why it's on their plate. So, we felt like really ensuring that we spent time, making sure that our mission and our strategic plan was being practiced consistently throughout the district was really an aim for our professional development. So, as you can see, we spent time from August and then through October, November, and December with our staff and then with our teachers, really looking at how we could engage them in a better understanding of our mission, and also specifically in strategy one of our strategic plan, and looking at how we could ensure that our practices are using culturally relevant pedagogy in our curriculum, our instruction, and our assessments. And then, the first Friday of October and the first Friday of November, we spent time with all of our secondary and elementary teachers in those two days, secondary in October and elementary in November, and then all of our staff, early childhood as well as elementary and secondary together this last Friday, to really look at how we could deepen the work that we started earlier in the year. We used a model that actually Superintendent Osai and I had been at a session over at Mankato State, Minnesota State University in Edina, where we had seen the Center for Social Improvement share a model of really looking at how to deliver a message that would really resonate with a large community, and recognizing that our staff across the district has very different roles, even though they may be under similar contracts. We wanted to really start by affirming the core values that we had, as I mentioned, our strategic plan and our, and what's in our mission, but then to counter what's there by really looking at what problems exist despite these clear values that we uphold, and then be explicit about how race and all of the factors that intersect with that may be still keeping us from being able to address everything and serving the needs of all of our children. And then contrast how our mission is really living out with a current reality around what is inequitable within our system as well. But we didn't want to leave with that. We wanted to ensure that our professional development offered concrete steps that we could take to transform our current reality for all of our children. So, one of the ways that we really tried to address that was by focusing on our how in the professional development. We really tried to model with all of our leaders and across our system courageous conversations about race. We had over 20 teacher leaders facilitating collaborative teams, both vertical teams at the secondary level and horizontal teams at the elementary and early childhood level, using our protocol for courageous conversations about race, but also helping engage them in meaningful activities that would ensure that they had purposeful and consistent collaboration when they went back to their sites, but also helping them understand what we meant by culturally relevant pedagogy. And then also looking at how we can use our current frameworks around international baccalaureate, immersion, and having in technology-enriched classrooms, and looking at how we could use those as tools for equity and for better serving our kids. We looked at key scholarship from some of the greatest scholars, particularly the last quarter-century, around culturally relevant practices. And all staff engaged in an article read by Gloria Ledson Billings, professor from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and recognizing that she laid out some of the greatest criteria that many of the other scholars in the last 25 years have used, we really tried to make sure we had a deep understanding of her work. It's also, just to note, she did the foreword for the book Courageous Conversations About Race. And I think the alignment between the work of culturally relevant pedagogy and courageous conversations was something that we really tried to make sure all of our staff not only saw us model, but was something that they could practice as well and internalize themselves throughout our days of PD. You know, we have many scholars that, you know, we worked with. I mentioned our creative team, and I think we have a caring team that really wants to make sure our professional development is meaningful. But we really have to look and honor the work of many of our scholars nationally who have informed the decisions that we made around our teachers' learning. So, you know, Lisa Delpit, who really has shared a lot of scholarship around how to help students from historically marginalized groups navigate a culture of power while honoring their own culture. And then we have Geneva Gay, a scholar that we referenced, who really wrote the textbook on culturally responsive teaching. And then Beverly Daniel Tatum, who wrote the book Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria? That now 20 years ago has been redone as a new book and is probably one of the most applicable books around understanding racial identity development, and helps teachers really understand how to talk to kids, as well as parents talk to their kids, about race. And then Yvette Jackson, who has worked in our region quite a bit and has worked with some of our teachers in St. Louis Park around a pedagogy of confidence and around the idea of looking at the inherent giftedness of all of our children. And then Zaretta Hammond, who came and spoke to our staff last June around the science of culturally responsive teaching and how it impacts our brain when we engage students in culturally enriching curriculum and instruction. And then there's Sonia Douglas Horstford from Columbia University, who has done a lot of work around the, how to realize the goals of integration and how important it is to be strategic and systemic in your work. And then, you know, I look to our own Frida Bailey and the way that she has engaged our racial equity instructional coaches, and really created a model that is recognized regionally and in some corners nationally, where we have coaches that are helping take the work of these scholars and help teachers apply them to their practices consistently across our system. So, I bring this up because I think the visual here speaks for itself. We have a rich, you know, body of research that we drew upon that often gets marginalized and not recognized maybe at the level that it could be across our schools. But it's one that we won't leave here, but one that we'll continue to dive into as we work with our teachers to have consistent practices. I'll just say, if you're wondering about the work that we dug into, Dr. Ledson Billings' work asks teachers to consider three things that she found to be the most successful in teaching, particularly children of color in classrooms, but really are applicable and help raise the achievement engagement of all children. And one is academic success, and that without these three criteria, we're not doing culturally relevant teaching, which is laid out explicitly in our strategic plan. But academic success, which is really teaching our children how to master a skill or standard, and ensuring that they achieve mastery. And we have teachers across our system, most notably at the middle school, who are really looking at how they can identify essential standards now that will, that they can say will be standards that we can ensure that all middle school children will master by the time they leave school and get into high school. Cultural competence, which she defines as developing proficiency in one's own racial and cultural identity, kind of the work of Beverly Daniel Tatum, and then working toward fluency in at least one other. And I think the work that we've done around racial discourse and around courageous conversations has helped us with that. But we also have teachers, I think, you know, whether it's the elementary and middle school or high school, looking at the developmental needs of children and looking at how we can teach this in ways that will really help them have a healthy identity as a learner, but also just as a human. And then critical consciousness, and the idea here of helping students see the relevancy in what they're learning, not just to help them become better off, but to become better people, to become better, period. And really, this idea of how do we apply what we've learned to help me become a better individual, but also to contribute to the collective good of our school or our community or even globally. So, with that said, the outcomes, I would say, that we hoped for, and I think that we are going to be able to really utilize through the rest of the year are threefold. One of the action pieces was that each team across our district developed a racial equity purpose statement, one that would really, really mirror the work of our mission, but would be personalized to their specific department or to their grade level, and help them look at how they can isolate race in their work in serving children in their particular corner of our system. The second was, we developed a repository of culturally relevant practices in action. We asked every teacher to look at those criteria from Dr. Ledson Billings, and then reflect upon and put into our Schoology course ways in which they had applied those to their practices and then reflect upon them. And then, the last piece was, we asked each team to develop a collective commitment, an action step that they would take, that whether it was their horizontal or their vertical team, that they would complete before the end of the year. And all of these then were there basically to help us achieve our mission, but also to really help create a ripple effect that hopefully our students would feel between now and the end of the school year. So, that's all I've got for now.
I think this is more of a comment. When, several years ago, when I first heard about the World's Best Workforce Plan, I mistakenly thought it was about our employees. I was like, oh, cool, like, we're trying to build the world's best workforce. Like, that sounds great. And then I learned that it was not. But then I thought, it is, it is. And then is sort of what you connected here today, is that in building our World's Best Workforce Plan, the how is our workforce and our professional development. And I have had the chance to attend a couple of the sessions this fall, and a few other board members have as well, and I just, I want to say that they've been incredible, and that they, the feedback I've heard from staff is that they've really noticed that they were more cohesive than in the past and more purposeful than in the past, where they felt like the different things hung together and sort of in a logical sequence, and helped them as learners, and it sort of, they felt that they were, they were learning in a way that they could then model towards their students. So, I want to thank you all for that, and those of you here who have, who had part of that. It's been, it's been great, and it's been, I'm just really impressed and thankful for this work that's been going on.
One thing you did point out in the report was one little bit of good news, that the black graduation rate has risen from like it was like 80% to now it's more like 90%. And I know we don't typically want to herald that because we'd like it to be 100%, but that's a sign that some progress is being made, so.
I want to thank you all for this presentation, and thank you for your dedication to supporting our enterprise as we move forward with our strategic plan and full implementation. You know, we're, we're at December 2018, and the plan goes through 2020, and this work that you've just undertaken moves us forward in a really dramatic way, and I'm really grateful. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Chair Waters, members of the board. And in closing, I just would like to thank each of you for giving us the permission and responsibility to lead with critical consciousness, right? So, as Patrick has outlined, you all have given us the opportunity to recognize what the current reality is and intervene in it in a very intentional way. And I stand before you, recognizing that the permission that we have here in St. Louis Park is not common, and we don't take that with, we don't take that lightly, and we have full confidence in the plan and the direction that we're going to positively impact student achievement. So, thank you.
All right. Next up on our agenda is policy development first reading for 503 student attendance, 503.1 early kindergarten admission, 503.2 school attendance areas. We received these policies ahead of our board packet on Friday. No one's come to me with anything. We're following MSBA guideline, and this will be back in January, so if you've got anything, I'm open to hearing it.
I went through these, and I didn't find anything, and it seems like there's a lot of statutory requirements in here anyway, so that, but I didn't see anything. Did anyone else?
Yeah, I didn't, I agree with you. I didn't see anything in the policy asked, and I just wanted to, I know the procedures are something that are administrative, and we don't vote on them, but I just wanted to invite you to take a look at the consequences of unexcused absences with a little depth because, and there may be full rationales for this, but I think they were in place before you got here. And they involve how we give notice to families. It seems to be by mail, and now we're in a technological age of email. There may be ways to do mail, email, phone calls, be more aggressive when students are missing class than sitting back, and... missing class and sitting back and that's just something I'm going to invite you and your team to think about because the consequences of continuing unexcused absences, including tardies, eventually evolve the impact on the grade. And I always personally have an issue with that because it's not based on how much you know, but there may be a rationale for that. But how much of an impact on the grade makes sense? How are we impacting which students with that? I'm just going to invite you to take a look at that.
I want to state for sure, especially at the high school, if your kid is not in attendance for any period, you're getting a phone call and you've got 24 hours to excuse it or not. They take attendance every single period. And, and part of that, just so that the people watching understand, it relates to our weighted average daily membership, the WOTM. That is the financial piece related to the formula of how we get our funding that Patricia had pointed out as part of our budget. So attendance is a crucial thing that everybody does every day, every class period.
Just a small question under kindergarten, what's it called, early kindergarten mission? When it says you need two letters of recommendation, is that just from anybody? It could be a neighbor, it could be a friend's parent?
At this time, we accept letters of recommendation from any community member, maybe preschool teacher, any, anyone that has a relationship with the student can speak to their readiness for kindergarten.
So it's not too onerous a requirement? All right.
So now on discussion item H, our addendum. This is related to the resolution of designated election polling places. We, we have a resolution. This is brought to us through the assistance of Cindy Bennett, our executive assistant. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 283, State of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a .11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The Board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a .11, the Board has established polling places for school elections not held on the day of a statewide election. The polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school district special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. The City of St. Louis Park, District 283 residents of the City of St. Louis Park will vote in district only elections and in conjunction with the city elections at their respective precinct as follows. Ward 1, Precinct 1 Bethel Synagogue located at 5224 26th Street West. Precinct 2 Peter Hobart Elementary School located at 6500 26th Street West. Precinct 3 St. Louis Park City Hall located at 5005 Minnetoka Boulevard. Precinct 4 Central Community Center located at 6300 Walker Street. Ward 2, Precinct 5 Union Congregational Church located at 3700 Alabama Avenue South. Precinct 6 St. Louis Park Recreation Center located at 3700 Monterey Drive. Precinct 7 Susan Lindgren Elementary School located at 4801 41st Street West. Precinct 8 Aldersgate Methodist Church located at 3801 Wooddale Avenue South. Ward 3, Precinct 9 Prince of Peace Lutheran Church located at 8115 State Highway 7. Precinct 10 Lenox Community Center located at 6715 Minnetoka Boulevard. Precinct 11 St. Louis Park Senior High School located at 6425 33rd Street West. Precinct 12 Aquila Elementary School located at 8500 31st Street West. Ward 4, Precinct 13 Westwood Lutheran Church located at 9001 Cedar Lake Road. Precinct 14 Park Assembly Church, 1615 Texas Avenue South. Precinct 15 Peace Presbyterian Church located at 7624 Cedar Lake Road. Precinct 16 St. Louis Park Middle School located at 2025 Texas Avenue South. City of Minnetoka, District 283 residents of the City of Minnetoka will vote in district only elections and in conjunction with the city elections at their respective precincts as follows. Minnetoka W2PE Lindbergh Center 200400 Lindbergh Drive. City of Edina, District 283 residents of the City of Edina will vote in district only elections and in conjunction with the city elections at their respective precinct as follows. That's Precinct 7 Susan Lindgren. City of Hopkins, District 283 residents of the City of Hopkins will vote in district only elections and in conjunction with the city elections at their respective precinct as follows. Precinct 8 Aldersgate Methodist Church located at 3801 Wooddale Avenue South. Precinct 13 Westwood Lutheran Church located at 9001 Cedar Lake Road. Hopkins Precinct 2 Zion Church located at 241 Fifth Avenue. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a .09, the combined polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the same day as a statewide election between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The clerk is directed to file a certified copy of this resolution with the county auditor of Dakota County within 90 days of its adoption. I believe that should state Hennepin County. As required by Minnesota Statute Section 204b .16 subdivision 1a, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of new polling place locations to each affected household with at least one registered voter in the school district whose school district polling place locations has been changed. The notice must be a non-foreable notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election to which it will apply. A notice that is returned as undeliverable must be forwarded immediately to the appropriate county auditor who shall change the registrant's status to challenge in the statewide registry system. That's it. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The personnel and business items recommended for approval, is there a motion for that? Moved by Jim Benneke, is there a second? Second by Mary Tombek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Next item, the action agenda. Acceptance of gifts to the district. It is recommended that the School Board approve the November donations gift to the district in the amount of $1,864.13. Is there a motion? Moved by Ann, is there a second? Second by Ken, is there, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. The next item, the 2019-20 Open Enrollment Affirmation. It is recommended that the School Board approve the 2019-20 Open Enrollment Affirmation as presented. And this, I have to think about as part of our packet. There's a, it's a procedural thing that we do related to Minnesota Statute 124d .03 and, and it's a, it's a perform a thing that we have to do. So is there a motion? Moved by Jim Benneke, is there a second? Second by Ken Morrison. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Next item, the Cedar Manor name change. It is recommended that the School Board approve the Cedar Manor name change as presented to Park Spanish Immersion Elementary School. Is there a motion? Moved by Nancy Gores, is there a second? Second by Ann Casey. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. The next item, approval of the 2018 audit. It is recommended that the School Board approve the 28 audit as presented. Is there a motion?
No.
Moved by Jim Benneke, is there a second? Second by Mary Tombek. Any other discussion people have about the audit? Okay, hearing none, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Next item, the final levy certification. It is recommended that the School Board approve the 2018 final levy certification as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Nancy?
Yes.
Seconded by Jim Benneke. Any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Next item, the international field trip request. It is recommended that the School Board approve the international field request as presented by our teacher Jeff Cohen. Is there a motion? Moved by Nancy Gores, is there a second? Second by Ann Casey. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Next item, employment contract approval, Director of Business Services. It is recommended that the School Board approve the employment agreement between Independent School District 283 and the Director of Business Services as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Nancy Gores, is there a second? Second by Ann Casey. Any discussion or Joe?
Can we get a quick spiel either from Aston or Rick on the, how we came to this, came
Chair, members of the board, just a summary of how we got here. We business, the former director of business services, Andy Saline, resigned effective June 30th and we set about finding a new leader for the business services department. We advertised, held interviews, went through the process and unanimously selected Patricia Magnuson to be the next business services leader. You know, we then looked to our, you know, director's contract and then, you know, created a, a contract that reflects the terms and conditions set out in, you know, in that agreement.
Any other discussion about that? I'm just going to say welcome onboard. We're really glad that you're here. All right, so.
You got to wait for the vote.
Sorry, sorry. I'm anticipating. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course not. That carries 7-0. Thank you so much.
Now you can do it.
Patricia, I am really glad that you are onboard. I have heard great things from the FAC already about your contributions and really appreciate the fact that you've been working so diligently on our behalf before you even have a contract. So thank you so much. We really, really appreciate your service. All right. Next item, we need to approve item H. We had the discussion of the designated election polling places. We request the approval of the resolution of the designated election polling places as previous read. Is there a motion? Moved by Mary Tombek, is there a second? Second by Jim Benneke. Any discussion on that?
I think you're kidding.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Now we are up to communications and transmittals. Nancy?
I'll just start. Each of us, except for the chair, has a school that we are a liaison to and this year, my school liaison, and we try to do it during the school year, is PSI. So I just wanted to ask people if they're interested to hold the date. It's May 20th. It's from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It is the PSI Farewell Open House. It'll take place at Central at PSI. It'll be an opportunity for current students and families, prior students and families, anybody in the community who wants to, to come in and give a last nod to the tile on the wall that the students created because I don't know if we figured out how to remove it to what is now known as Cedar Manor and to see what used to be and, and kind of say our thank yous and our farewells. And there'll be a program, a special presentation, let me rephrase that, at 6 o'clock and there'll be tours and, you know, the more folks that come, the happier it'll be.
Let's see if the mic wants to work right now. So I have been working on my racial consciousness for a long, long time. I have the bookshelf to prove it. And Karen, you talk a lot about how you will fail, but you will fail gracefully. I think I fall on my face more often than not and so I've learned I have a lot more work to do. And I think that my husband and my friends would like me to find somebody else to talk to or additional people to talk to about my efforts. And so to that end, and I feel like Dr. Duffy teed this up quite nicely for me tonight, I am going to be starting Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria very soon, myself. This book actually was recommended to me by one of our racial equity coaches, Omar Adams, several months ago. I'm sorry Omar that it's taken me this long for it to get to the top of the pile, but I will be starting this soon and I was just wondering if any other board members would like to join me in this so that I do have somebody else to talk to. I may see if Matt wants to come too, but, and I thought perhaps in the next couple of meetings, we may all get together and see if we want to create a plan to go forward to read this book together, perhaps with administrators and see what we can learn to continue our own efforts in our strategies. It aligns obviously like Patrick was saying, with our strategies and our missions in this district. So I look forward to getting started on this and if anybody would like to join me, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm in. I added it to my Amazon list as Patrick was talking, so we'll, we'll see how the
There's a couple concerts coming up at the high school. Let's see, on Tuesday, December 18th, the high school choirs perform at 7 o'clock. And on Thursday, December 20th, the orchestra has their alumni concert and that's also at 7 o'clock.
Thank you, everybody. It was a long one but worth it. We only meet one time in December. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mary Tombek, is there a second? Second by Ann Casey. Any discussion? I didn't think so. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed there? Nope, 7-0, 9:34. Thank you, everybody.